Good morning.
Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Blue Earth County Board meeting of March 22nd, 2022. I'll stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I would move the agenda.
It's been moved to a second? Okay, second by Kip. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. And now, at this point, I will entertain a motion and second to recess our board meeting to hold the Economic Development Authority meeting.
Submove.
Second.
Second and a move, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. I'll call the meeting of the Economic Development Authority to order, and the first item is to review the agenda. And Bob, are there any changes to the agenda here?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Okay, thank you.
Run for move.
Yep, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Okay, next we have the review of the January 4th, 2022 minutes. Can I have a motion and second?
That moves to approve.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Have the Economic Development Authority minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, and Nancy, of course, is here, want to come up and go over the Housing Choice Voucher Utility Allowance Schedule.
Good morning Nancy.
And good morning Nancy.
Good morning Nancy, how are you?
I'm good, how are you? So today, we wanted to bring before you the revised utility allowance schedules for Blue Earth County, and we review these every year, we're required by HUD to review them every year and make any adjustments. And these utility allowances are used in determining gross rents for tenants, so we add these utility costs that the tenant has to pay for to the rent the landlord is charging to come up with a gross rent that we actually compare to our payment standards to make sure units are affordable, so that's what we're using these for. And every year, we do review consumption histories of tenants that are participating on the program, and then also look at utility rates and how they're changing. We do Google information, looking for like time estimates for life of appliances and that type of thing. And then where there's not sufficient numbers, we do have a multiplication factor that HUD provides us to allow us to fill in the blanks of the schedules. And this year, you'll see that a lot of our tenants actually just pay for electric, so they're paying for the electric cooking and general electric, so that's the majority of our tenants, so then we have to fill in a lot with the multiplication factors. And so you'll see changes in the schedules for the heating costs, and because we don't have a lot of tenants that are using those heating costs, we couldn't really break them down by apartments, duplex, mobile homes, or single family, so you'll see that they've been kind of combined just because we didn't have enough consumption histories to look at. But we did see increases in utility costs as far as gas, electric, and then sewer rates, and a lot of what we were seeing, even though like electricity, we did not see an increase in the rates, but we saw consumption increases. So we could definitely tell over the last couple of years, tenants have been staying more at home, and so we're seeing more consumption history, or consumption usage in the units, and so that's had a big factor in why we made some changes here. And then in our packet, we also did kind of give you a breakdown for an average two-bedroom unit if a tenant were paying for heat, electric, water heater costs, and we showed you how we did compare that to the rents. So we're bringing before you these schedules to have you approve for the next year.
I would move the new schedules.
And there's a second new schedule, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Thank you very much Nancy, and yep, see it was so good that you all understood it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would move to adjourn.
Moved to adjourn by Kip, a second? Vance, was it? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. We are adjourned, and now we have planning and zoning. And welcome gentlemen. If you want to introduce yourself, and we'll start, George.
I'm George Leary, Senior Land Use Planner with Blue Earth County Planning and Zoning. PC 05-22 is a request from Darwin and Noel Sorensen Revocable Trust. Is a request for review and approval of a preliminary plat of the Sorensen subdivision number three consisting of five lots and two outlots. The property is zoned rural townsite and agricultural, and is in the shoreline of Crystal Lake, which is classified by the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources as a general development lake, and Loon Lake, which is classified as recreational development lake. The property is in parts of Section 4 of Garden City Township. Staff presented the report, the applicant was present and had no additional comment. Four public citizens addressed the planning commission and expressed the following questions and comments. One has provided permanent protection from development of Outlet A. Second was include covenants that limit the lots to single-family dwellings. Third is use the parkland dedication fee for a walking path outside of the right-of-way of County State Aid Highway 9 on lots 1 through 3 of Block 1, and that is on the north side of County State Aid Highway 9. And fourth was to provide a method for assessing lots 1 through 3 of Block 1 for the improvements that have already been made to the township road already in place. The chairman of the planning commission stated that the applicants have met the established criteria and that the implementation of covenants is up to the applicant. The chairman also stated that regarding the road issues, townships have properties that are being developed that were not previously assessed, and the townships do not have a vehicle to assess the newly developed lots. Other members of the planning commission stated that the plat is laid out well and with large lots. Following the discussion, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions prepared by staff, and the board action is a resolution.
All right. At this time, do we, we can open for public comment on PC number 05-22. This hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. For those participating via Zoom, you can unmute your line by clicking the microphone button on the bottom of your computer screen or pressing star six on your phone. Okay, do we have a, um, just point, do we have any public comment? All right, none of, we're hearing none, we can have a motion and a second to this?
I would move approval.
Been moved by Kip, second by Vance. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right.
PC 07-22 is a request from Gary and Faith Hudson Trust. Is a request for review and approval of the final plat of Hudson Acres subdivision consisting of one lot and one outlot. The property is zoned rural residence and is in the south half of the northwest quarter of Section 22 Garden City Township. Staff presented the report, the applicants were present and had no additional comment, and there was no other public comment. Members of the planning commission expressed no questions or comments regarding the request. Following the discussion, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation for approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions prepared by staff, and the board action is a resolution.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, we will open for public comment on PC dash 07, uh, 07-22. This hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. For those participating via Zoom, you can unmute your line by clicking the microphone button on the bottom of your screen, or number six on your phone. Okay, anybody wishing to comment regarding PC dash 07-22? Anyone else wishing to comment on 07-22? If not, we'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the board.
Pat moves to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Thank you for that, George. At this point then, we have, oh, get the right one here, PC 08-22?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, is that for John? You want to introduce yourself?
Sure, John Considine, Senior Land Use Planner.
Thank you.
Uh, PC 08-22 is a request for review and approval for an amendment to the shoreline ordinance to allow short-term rental as an interim use. Of note that the shoreline ordinance does require review by the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, and that review was conducted, DNR noted that they had no concerns about adding use to the shoreline ordinance, and that that was not within their purview. At the planning commission, staff presented the report, there was no public comment. Members of the planning commission thanked staff for the work that had been done on the ordinance and added that the amendment was crucial in shoreline. Following the discussion, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation for approval of the amendment to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff. The board action is adoption of the ordinance amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, John. If we have a motion and a second regarding?
Mr. Chair, I believe we need public comment here.
At this time, we have to open, we opened it for public comment on PC number 08-22, and this hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. For those participating via Zoom, you can unmute your line by clicking the microphone button on the button of your computer screen or pressing star six on your phone. Okay, then, we can have any comment regarding, and then, and there has none up there. Okay, at this point then, we can call for a motion and a second.
Submove.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, um, any discussion by the board?
Nope. Questions for me.
Okay, all right, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries. The motion carries for sure here, and that closes the public hearing of our planning and zoning hearing, so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it, gentlemen, thank you for coming. All right.
George, you got a nice springy shirt on today, it's noted.
Okay, at this point, we do have Craig Osterson and Ryan Henneker with, uh, several ditches.
Craig, take the.
Morning, just want to introduce yourselves, I guess, and we'll start.
Let's see, I believe I have my repair report first. Ryan Henneker, Blue Earth County Public Drainage Management. It is a repair report for County Ditch 47. This is actually a repair that was previously approved and did not get built. Since then, the prices have probably more than doubled, so the previous approval was for around $35,000. Today, I'm seeking approval for 75 to 80. So, yes, way more than doubled.
All right.
That's mostly because of pipe prices, fuel prices.
How long ago did we bid it?
Um, my repair report was from...
The first time?
Uh, I believe it was 19.
Okay, I don't recall it, to be honest with you, what was the reason?
20, it was, it was late 20, so.
I don't recall it, what was the reasoning for not moving forward at that point?
No, it was approved, it just physically never got.
Oh, it never got built?
Prepared, so yes.
Got you, okay, misunderstood that, I thought we approved a bid to do it and just didn't do it, okay.
No, yeah, no, nope, it was approved, it just physically didn't get done, so.
I would move approval.
I was just gonna say, move, motion to move, second? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, opposed, carries. And we have, what, ditch 52, bid award, huh?
Okay, Craig Osterson, Drainage Management, Purpose. County Ditch 52 is a 1,199-acre watershed located in Sterling Township, Blue Earth County Drainage Authority made findings and order approving improvements to County Ditch 52 on November 23rd, 2021. The project engineer Chuck Randall of ISG prepared and advertised for bids for the improvement. Bids were opened on March 3rd, 2022. There were four bidders with a low bid of $1,117,403.41 coming from Groundworks Back Hole Service LLC of Janesville, Minnesota. The engineer's estimate was $1,284,871.45. ISG has worked with Groundworks Back Hole Service LLC on past projects of similar work with positive results. Requested action, the engineer recommends that the Blue Earth County Board, acting as a drainage authority for County Ditch 52, award the contract for the improvement of County Ditch 52 to Groundworks Back Hole Service LLC in the amount of $1,117,403.41.
And moved by Vance?
Pat's second.
Second by Kevin. Any just questions, all those in favor?
That's a rather large amount, just for an improvement, for, I mean, for a fixing, and so going through a ditch hearing and everything, you know what I mean?
$1 million?
Yeah.
It's gonna be more and more common.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, this is, other counties are seeing a lot, much bigger projects too, so.
Well, 52 is an improvement.
Yeah, it's an improvement, it's not just a repair.
It's an improvement.
Yep, yep, yep.
But that, yeah, I think people are going to be amazed at the kind of money it costs, I mean, when you look at what needs to be done with those ditches, with backhoes and all this stuff, it costs money.
Oh, yeah.
So, but that's, that's a lot of money for.
Pipe prices are really what it's getting us, yeah.
Yeah.
It's incredible.
I imagine.
Yeah.
All right, uh, we vote on that?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, all those in favor of the, on the, rewarding the bid on ditch 52?
Aye.
If I say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right, the last one there.
Okay, um, this is a drainage, again, myself, Craig Austin, Drainage Management Coordinator. This is an award bid for, for the repair of County Ditch 89. County Ditch 89 is an 878-acre watershed located in Pleasant Mountain Township. The Blue Earth County Drainage Authority made findings and order approving the bridge replacement on November 2nd, 2021. The project engineer Chuck Randall of ISG prepared and advertised for bids for the repair. Bids were opened on March 14th, 2022. There were two bidders with a low bid of $208,437 for the base bid and $244,804 for the bid alternate. Both low bids came from Borneke Construction, Inc. of Janesville, Minnesota. The engineer's estimate was $161,321.71 for the base bid and $320,623.51 for the bid alternate. ISG has worked with Borneke Construction, Inc. on past projects of similar work and with positive results. The board shall consider both the base bid and the alternate, bid alternate. ISG has contacted Borneke Construction, Inc. They have confirmed, confirmed that with their pre-cast supplier, that product supply timelines are currently six to seven months range and would anticipate an October start date if the base bid option is chosen. If the bid alternate cast-in-place option is chosen, Borneke Construction, Inc. anticipates construction beginning in early May of 2022. The bridge does not, does provide access to a landlocked property, and the current bridge has been removed after it collapsed last year. If the cast-in-place option were chosen, it would provide access for the fall harvest this fall of 2022. Both options satisfy the capacity of the crossing needs for the landowners in County Ditch 89 system. The bid alternate would cost an additional $36,367, whoever the landowners will be able to use the crossing for the fall harvest. Requested action, we request the Drainage Authority choose to award either the base bid of $208,437 or the bid alternate of $244,804 to Borneke Construction, Inc.
All right, thank you, Craig.
Any thoughts on that, Kevin?
A couple of thoughts, I guess, and it's, number one, this is a landlocked piece, as I understand it.
Yes.
So that causes some, some concern and things like that, we've dealt with that in the past. You need to have access, especially throughout the whole year, but certainly not having access and harvest. You know, a little bit of concerns from my perspective, if you take that additional $36,000 divided by the only 870 acres in the watershed, that's over $41 an acre just for that additional cost. I would like to think in this day and age, in this county, we could come up with some sort of an agreement for an easement, even a short-term easement, to make it work, but we've looked at all of that, and that is not an option on something like that, and I guess when you own land, you have that, that right as well. I've got some real concerns about, you know, it's our responsibility to, to do the repair, but having the repair and not being able to have access to that for, for the upcoming year. But we have to recognize it's significant extra cost to the, to the, the people in the, in the watershed.
And we've had conversations about this, if I recall, and there is no other option, correct? We've tried to get an easement, we've tried several different options, and there's just nothing available.
Yes, there are other options we suggested are all, have all been rejected by landowners.
Well, there must be something temporarily going on now?
Yes.
I mean, they're getting to the field now.
The temporary option was to actually go pay damages to adjoining landowner going across the field.
And we have that authority to do that if we do want to hold this off till fall? Because Kevin's right, $34,000 is a lot of extra money.
Well, we've been, we've been doing that for, for a little while here.
So we can?
Yeah. The, the bridge has actually collapsed last year, but it's been in kind of disuse for a little bit longer than that, so.
We can get the person that's landlocked in and out of their field, is what I'm hearing.
Yes, by going across a neighbor's field who's not very happy about him going across the field, yes.
It's, yeah, it's a lot of extra money, though.
What's the cost?
Vance?
That we're receiving for, are we, what, what are we paying the neighbor for allowing them to go across his field?
Uh, was, I'm trying to remember.
Is he going to continue to allow us to do that?
It was about an acre of damage, if I remember correctly, so.
No, whatever our going rates are, so.
Whatever our going rates, so about a thousand, less than a thousand.
Yeah, I would guess it's all that, because it's a half a mile. Uh, I would guess here, 3,000 feet, I don't have my calculator, it's all of an acre, yeah, plus some.
And we have the authority to do that for one more season, or is there a legality here that we?
No, I don't think there's any, it's, it's a board decision. You know, we, we can probably do that, if there are damages, we're gonna pay the landowner.
Well, I understand that, but it's.
Starts in Charlie, I don't know that we force this either.
If he says no, you can't drive on my land, what are our options for the landowner?
Well, we got one landowner who says if you pay me damages temporarily, he's allowing, that's Mr. Urban, who's allowing them to go across his land, so we do, we have other landowners there who says no way you're gonna cross my land, but Urban is allowing to go across with damages, as long as it's, he knows it's temporary.
So if we approved the one, um, for the 208 and get it done this fall, and for some reason they, you couldn't get him access, how long do we have to go to the next bid? Understand my question?
Can you change your mind?
Change, yeah, if we, because apparently, guys, do we have, or do we have an agreement in place for the next growing season?
No, we currently don't.
Do we don't?
No, no, Urbans have declined to actually form, we tried to formalize an agreement, and they said they didn't.
This will be just for one more season?
Yeah, just one more season.
This year?
This year, yes.
Including harvest?
Including harvest. Well, they're gonna go, they're gonna probably go across for, for plant, to plant it in the spring.
Planting and harvest.
And it'll be one more time in the, in the fall.
And that'll cost us a couple thousand bucks for the ditch system, opposed to $36,000.
But do we have that in writing?
So do we have that in writing?
No, we do not.
So at any time, he could, he could come out and say, I don't want to do this no more?
Yes.
Oh, my God.
Yep. Well, the bridge ain't gonna be built by spring, so if it ain't done by spring, you ain't gonna get the crops in there, so I think we had a real issue on our hands here.
And it would take that long to cure anyhow, I mean, you're looking at 90 days for curing, something like that.
Well, it won't be done by spring, it ain't gonna happen, it's physically impossible.
But if we do, the option two would be done by fall.
Right, but what's, it's a moot point, if we don't have access, you can't get the crops to the field, correct? Why would you have to harvest them, why have the, why have the bridge done by fall to harvest something that you didn't get done? But unless they want to do a half deal, so you can get in there and you can, I wish we had an agreement in place.
You know, it was about 40 acres, how big is the, the piece?
That landlocked piece?
Yeah.
I don't remember what the top may have.
Uh, I think, well, it's a 40-acre parcel, but then, of course, the parcel, half is on one side of the ditch, and accessible to the landowner, and then the other half. So I think it's about 20-some acres.
So we're only talking 20 acres, that's it?
Yeah, 20 acres.
So we're spending, if there's 20 acres, we're spending $1,800 an acre additionally to have it done sooner versus later.
Essentially, yeah. Yes.
Divided about only landowners at 878-acre ditch yet, correct?
Yes.
I mean, this is a hugely expensive project, as they all have, we've already talked about that, as many of them are. The difference with this one is being divided up with 878 acres versus the last one that was under 2,000, which some could be 3,000 or 4,000. So it's gonna be an expensive proposition.
And you're only accessing 20 acres of land.
Yes, and that's why we had that, as many informational meetings with the landowner, and we had multiple meetings with the landowners and.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, but the adjoining system that drains into it should also pay some outlet fee for this repair also, so there are some other.
So it's not, it's not fair to divide it by 878 acres?
It's a good starting point, but no. Right, yeah. JD 24 pays an outlet fee. Correct, so, yeah.
Well, I think we got a, a big decision to make here, but I certainly would support the base bid of 208, and if something falls apart on it, we'll have to deal with it in the future, but.
Well, I worry about setting a precedent here where we don't look at the, the best bid just because we want it done earlier, whether it's a piece of equipment for the public works, it's like we're willing to pay not twice as much, but we're willing to pay significantly more if we can have something six months earlier. That's a, that's a tough place to put yourself in when you spend the public tax dollars.
And I'd be more supportive of it if it could be up and running for the whole season. I'd be a different conversation here, because to me, if you can't get the bridge, bridge in. I'd be a different conversation here, because to me, if you can't get the bridge in before you plant, and we can't plant, there's no reason to have it open for fall. That's kind of where I'm going. So I would move approval of the 208, 437.
Back seconds.
Then moved by Kip and second by Pap for the 208.
I agree with the conversation going.
We had a lot of discussion.
For 20 acres, it's not worth the time. If we were talking about a section of property or something like that, that would be a whole different thing, but for 20 acres, we're not, you know, we can't spend $36,000 extra dollars for 20 acres of land. And as far as we know, he still might get the ability to drive across the neighbor's property to harvest this fall.
Yeah, we'll pay, we'll pay damages.
Right, but I think we'll pursue something that's definitely signed and written.
Get that done soon. Get that done soon.
Okay. Is there any further discussion, questions? Because I even, I understand it as well and concur here. So with that, we have the motion ahead of, in front of us. All those in favor of the motion, second five, we say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries. And thank you, gentlemen. This works out?
Nobody said this was an easy job.
All right. Next, we have Human Services, Mr. Phil Clausen and Angie Youngerberg. I guess I introduced you already. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Well, Mr. Chair, thank you for hearing us today. I have a number of action items that I want to bring before your attention for your reaction. And the first of those is under Supportive Housing. There's a couple of items. Hearth Connection. We've brought these contracts forward here, and this is the third of three contracts with Hearth. And this one, again, related to long-term homelessness, our contract with Blue Ridge County for Supportive Housing Services in the eight-county region that we serve directly. So this is for direct service. The counties are listed in the narrative that are part of this partnership. It serves youth, individuals, and families experiencing long-term homelessness in those counties. The dollars for the biennium are $854,615, which represents a $20,000 decrease for those two years. And the term is January 1st of '22 through December 31st of '23. And the next one is Partners for Housing Purchase of Service Agreement. This is to provide support and recovery services offered at Teresa House and Welcome Inn and delivered by a case aid position that they hire through their organization. This is a renewal of the board's agreement for $30,000 annually, same as previous year. The term, January 1st of '22 through December 31st of '22. And then Substance Use Disorder Programming. I'll take these two together unless there's questions. Zumbro Valley Health Center, Woodland Center, both detox providers back up to our New Ulm facility, Brown County Evaluation Center. Detox obviously is mandated, mandated service for folks that are detained by law enforcement within our county. They're transported to either Zumbro or Woodland Centers if there's no bed available at detox in New Ulm. The per diem for Zumbro is hosted by Olmsted County. There's a significant increase in their host county contract of 9.82%, and the per diem is $438 for '22. And then Woodland Centers, higher per diem of 595, but a smaller increase of 2.5% from the previous year. Mr. Chair, if there are any questions on those items, the next couple of items are a little more in the weeds, a little more detailed. So I'm just wondering if anybody has any questions before we...
Okay. Any questions, Phil or Angie, on the first items?
Who is, how many people are we sending, how many people can Brown County not handle a year? I mean, there's a lot, is it?
It's gone up dramatically. We have, Commissioner, talked to law enforcement about this, both City Cops and our Sheriff's Department, and I know DWI's have been up and just the full center of Brown County has been up too. So it has been a lot. I can give you that much as far as the number. I know we were speaking of that specifically this last month. Do you remember a kind of overflow?
Yeah, I don't remember a specific number, but I would say it went from, you know, in the past, we would send, you know, maybe one or two people there a month to Zumbro. Zumbro's kind of like the second place that we go, and then Woodland Centers is the third, really. But Brown County is the first place that we tend to send people. And I would say now, we're probably talking, it's a percentage of people versus one and two. And so Zumbro Valley takes individuals that are a little bit more health complex, so individuals with diabetes and things like that, whereas Brown County may or may not have capacity for that at that time. So there's a number of factors.
So this could not just because the beds are full, it could be because of other issue. They could go somewhere else.
Yeah. And another issue, Commissioner, is medical clearances. Detox is licensed at subacute, and so a lot of these folks are getting sent over to the ED first for medical clearance, just to make sure they're stable enough to go to detox, because it isn't a high-level healthcare facility. So, yeah, there's a lot of factors. I'm sorry if you mentioned this, but sometimes there's long-term holds on detox too, and this is a catch-22, that we appreciate Brown County working with us and holding folks that are waiting for a bed or on commitment, but they fill up a bed. And so did you talk about that too?
I didn't, but that's absolutely a big factor. That Brown County has been doing that more and more, and it's beneficial, given the lack of resources. So they've really stepped up to the plate and helped us in that way. But it does kind of push the capacity issue as well, so.
And what do we pay Brown County approximately?
It's a 435.
Oh, it is. So it's not, this isn't double.
No, it's, no.
But it's transportation issues.
Right, right.
A lot longer.
And they do give us a discount being a member county too, so there's some good business rules in there mixed in.
Well, I think it's a good, important issue right now, because being on the detox board, I, you know, there's constantly talk about expanding and should, you know, the cost of expanding and this and this, and should they, or, you know. Now, if, if the only reason we were sending people to Zumbro Valley and Woodland Centers was because they're short, I mean, we can't get people in Brown County? That'd be one reason for expansion?
Yes.
But if the reason is because of medical issues, well, you can't spend a half a million dollars to expand the detox in New Ulm to take care of something that they're not going to be taking care of anyway.
So, right.
So that's, you know, being both boards, you know, I'm kind of sitting there going, okay.
Right.
I get it. I mean, but we have to kind of weigh both sides.
Commissioner, you know that there's cyclical pieces like this too. So from the business planning perspective, I mean, several lifetimes ago, I ran detox up north, and you try to plan for beds. We were even smaller detox. And then you're in a college town, and it's homecoming. How do you, how do you plan for that? How do you build for that? And you can't. And so there's, that's how it goes throughout the year, you know, ups and downs, and kids are home from college, and there's more activity. That's just how these, the business model goes in this. And to build for that, like being on the board there, it's a really hard place to shoot an arrow.
Yeah. Well, and then planning for things like St. Patrick's Day, day before Thanksgiving.
Mr. Chair, just to complement what Mr. Clausen is saying, there has been an increase of over 50% of driving while impaired arrests from 2020 to 2021, and that trend is continuing on.
50%?
Yes.
Wow.
And, yeah, that was striking. Law enforcement told us that too, like the county attorney is saying, and we weren't really aware that the numbers were so dramatic.
That's amazing.
It is.
That's going with all the other, I mean, being on TZB, it's going with all the other speed.
Right.
Stop sign violations, I mean, that are causing accidents and stuff. It's, they're, I, you know, I don't know if we have anger driving going on out there or what, but of course, the alcohol could be part with anger too, so.
Absolutely. And then, I mean, I guess at this point, because things are trending in the right direction, that I think COVID-related, people maybe drinking at home and deciding they're going to go out and drive, and, you know, that kind of decision-making that I hope is skewed by something that we can put in the rear, the mirror at some point.
Yeah.
That's all part of that post-COVID stuff.
Yeah, exactly.
Speeding in general on that regard.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to jump back in here then on action items, and we have a few more. These might, might be a little more involved as far as detail orientation. The first of those being the Emergency Assistance Program Policy. For your purposes, Mr. Chair, there's no signature on this, on this item, but I talked about it, and we agreed that it'd be good to just bring it before the board's attention, make sure we have consent to move forward in what we're planning to do here. I'm going to just give a thumbnail of this and turn it over to Angie, who can kind of walk us through a document that's attached in your packet related to emergency assistance. Emergency programs are both for adults and families. This is in your narrative. There are a few changes that have been, there were few changes made over the past several years, so it's a pretty stable policy that we have. Emergency assistance is for families, and emergency general assistance is for adults. So there's a split up in the structure of these types of supports. And through CARES, there was a one-time funding that was approved through our county board here, and we're recommending that some of those items continue long-term for updates in our policy, and we just want to make sure the board is supportive of these recommendations. The amount of emergency assistance and EGA, the Emergency General Assistance, is based on funds available from the state. They're spent down, and once they're spent down, they're gone. And until they renew, the amount of money, the program kind of comes to a suspend mode. And there is no county levy used in EA or EGA. And we're asking if you're supportive of what we're recommending to adopt this as of April 1st of this year. So I'll turn it over to Angie to walk us through.
All right. So in your packet, you'll find the Blue Ridge County Emergency Assistance Program's policy, and there are a number of highlighted areas, and I just want to touch on those so that you can see that those are the areas that we're recommending changes. As Phil indicated, this policy has not been changed in many, many years. It's been a very stable and effective policy for us. However, times have changed, especially with COVID. And when you did allow us to make some adjustments through the CARES funding, we changed a few pieces about how we administer this program, and we had really good feedback from staff and from recipients about how this just made more sense. And so some of this is simplification that we learned through that process. And so if this is adopted today, we will be submitting this to DHS as part of our biennial plan. So that's where it becomes effective then and how we can use that. So as Phil indicated, there's two pots of money, one for families, one for adults, and the eligibility criteria for those is listed here. The first area highlighted is clarification. The old policy language was, was a little more vague, and this, this policy language comes directly from statute, where emergency assistance follows annual gross income guidelines, and emergency general assistance follows annual net income guidelines. It is something that we must follow statute, so we have to calculate those deformly. Number six is something that we wanted to add. This was not in our previous policy, but it is in line with both our fraud program and how the state would expect us to apply these programs. So any household that is applying for emergency assistance may not have anyone residing there that has an active felony warrant, because if we do provide funding for that family, we're actually aiding an active felon, fleeing felon. And so we cannot provide funding, and that, that again, is part of policy. Number nine, we'd like to change it ongoing to 30 days prior to the date of application. This was a major change through COVID. The old policy used to read that it was calculating the two full calendar months prior to the date, or prior to the month of application. And with COVID, we knew that things changed rapidly in people's lives and in their households. And this is something that has made a lot of sense in terms of how we're calculating right now, because income can change rapidly, and what it does is actually delays people's emergencies and their crisis, crises until later. And oftentimes, we were having people come in and we'd say, well, you're not eligible yet, come back in a month, or come back in two months if you still have the emergency. And that just made the emergency get much larger, and that became problematic. And so this would be that 50% of their net income must be used for basic needs in that timeframe. And we expanded, actually clarified what those basic needs are, and so those are listed there. 9B is about the Thrifty Food Plan and SNAP benefit, and that also is DHS language about how we would calculate that. And so that just assures that we don't pay more than what the state would expect us to pay for food. Car repairs, this, number 10, gives a lot more specifics. In the past, the policy language was vague, and these are recommended changes so that we can assure that the support that we would be providing would be used in the most appropriate way. And then, you know, really, 10E, so repair estimate must come from an established business, is something that staff have really appreciated so that we can check that the quote that's being given to us is from an established business. And then on the last page, the eligibility determinations, just having the payment maximums up to 1,200, where in the past it was a calculation, and in some cases, it would get to 1,200, in others, it would be a very odd number, less, this is a much more simple way of looking at it, and is much more in line with how other counties process this as well. Any questions on this policy?
That concludes that, okay. At this point, I think, well, we just need to have, approve them all?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I might go ahead and go into the administrative pieces, because these are actually action items as well, if you're okay with that.
Okay.
This next one also has a little more detail to it, just in case the board has any questions. Again, Angie's going to kind of walk us through the changes quickly. The whole policy is attached to, sometimes board members want to look at some of the detail and see, you know, just an excerpt is sometimes hard to interpret. So we're recommending adjustments to human service fee policy for this year, and the attachment, what Angie will walk us through next, highlights the changes. And like I said, the fee policy is attached, if you want to dive deeper into all the content.
So every year, we bring before you the fee policy, and there's, as Phil said, two pages of changes. They're very minor changes to the fee policy. Most of them are grammatical. On page two, we did change an align language so that what we would charge for copies of case files and reports is consistent with our county's data practices policy, so that our two policies are in line. And then a change to our collection process that is not, it's a change in the policy that reflects our current practice. Our current practice around collections does not have the 150 days of payment process as it is right now, and so that is being managed actively by the billing team on a monthly basis. There are some other grammatical errors throughout. The social services, daycare services fees for centers and families is a DHS change, so we just needed to reflect it in our policy. It's not a fee that we establish, it's a fee that DHS establishes. And then adding Appendix C into the actual reference into the fee policy was added, and then we just updated the appendices as well.
Okay. Thanks, Angie.
Mr. Chair, you'll see the pattern, that the more involved, hard ones I give to Angie, I'm taking the ones that are straightforward and easy. So next one's pretty simple. There's a couple of appointments for our human services committees, both Mental Health Task Force, Christina Ruby to be added to the task force. force, Christina Ruby to be added to the task force, Commissioner District Two, and Christopher Broad, mental health task force as well, Commissioner District Four. Final action item is Lynette Ayers was asked to represent Blue Earth County on the Smiles Board. Smiles' mission is to support people with disabilities to realize their full potential, and you'll see some of the highlights of what they're about, independent living, consumer-controlled, individualized care, accessible, and equal opportunity for individuals that might also have a disability. And so those are our action items, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, any other question?
Yep. Kip?
If we go back to the emergency assistance program, I'm, I'm assuming these changes are beneficial, and it does it make the, the system more complex, or is it worth it at the end of the day? And is there other things we could do to make it more productive and usable?
I might just, yeah, give you my two cents, and Angie, does, the direct reports come through her, so she knows some of how it presents to us in a practical way, but theoretically, I think it, it is an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. That's a philosophy for you. The other thing that we look at is we don't want EA or really these types of supports to be a dependency that we create with families. And so this particular one, the fact that we do run out of money, really guarantees that people won't go from cycle to cycle using emergency assistance. It is really those situations, like, I was thinking, we didn't spend time on scenarios, but somebody's car breaks down, they can't get to work, they lose their job. That's not good for anybody. And so that's what we're talking about, and it's one-time hitters like that that have to qualify, and we do a full intake to make sure that they're not spending $300 on cable or, you know, going on trips. And so we check, that's what our financial workers actually do to ensure that there is no, I guess you'd say fraud or inappropriate use of these funds to support something beyond essential needs. So it's all about that. I don't know if you've had it.
Yeah, I, I would also say that the way the policy is drafted and allowed is that a person can only use the funds once, either in a 12-month period or in an 18-month period, so they can't have an emergency month after month after month and come back for more funding. And when the funding is gone, it's gone. And so we use our grant funds from the state for this, and, you know, the only time that we've supplemented it is through the CARES funding that, that you all provided, but otherwise, when this state fund is, is gone, it's exhausted, and it is extremely beneficial for families. The changes are about simplification. They are about, and, and we had feedback from staff saying, this helps us, this helps us with clarity, and so that we're not saying, you know, in, in one scenario, we'll look at it this way, and another scenario, we'll look at it this way. This is, makes it much more clear cut for them to interpret policy.
Good.
Yeah. It sounds, yeah, thank you. And it sounds like that, and so is it, do you, do you have people that constantly goof up, I guess, or, and so you have to each time go back because, you know, I don't know how much repetition there is, or how much is allowed, or how that works?
Yeah, and again, I would say, you know, from our mission standpoint, a lot of times there's a crisis that occurs, and I'm going to stick with the car analogy, where there's a hardship, and that can take a family down that has vulnerability. I, I think it wouldn't be a square answer to say the families we serve, you know, just need a little boost and then everything's better. A lot of these families struggle chronically. I mean, that's honest, Commissioner, it really is. But I think what we don't want to do, and we're very aware of, is create that false dependency, like this is a way to live or a way to operate. And so we see it as very much of trying to set a platform underneath a person or a family. So housing is a good example, where without that stable housing, you know, where do you go from there? But then I also, you know, kind of market back to our other missions, where case management for families that have multiple needs, which a lot of our families do, is to me, the bread and butter, is that we get somebody that can look at navigating a whole system and deal with the root problems. And this is, of course, my background too, you, you get deeper into the roots of what's really wrong here and how do we have a sustainable job? I mean, the job market right now helps our mission a ton, because people can get work. And there's times where that's not true. And what do you, what do you offer? And, you know, you have cash assistance or nothing. Now, hey, let's get you into a job situation that you have interest in, and so that takes a while. You can't do that, you know, sitting there for an hour with somebody and say, let's talk about your whole career. But a case manager can do that work, and they can really set a table for the long term. So, so that would be where I have passion for this mission, is that we don't create a false dependency, but that we do try to take families that have lots of needs, multiple needs, and try to help them in a real way for the long term.
So, so one very real scenario in this is, that we would see frequently, is say there's a family who's struggling, and an individual in the family is working with an employment counselor, and they have a job starting next week, right? And so that's good, that's positive progress, but they're behind on their rent, they can't afford their groceries, and their car's broke down. And so with this fund, you know, we can only fund up to the $1,200, and so what happens is our financial worker will work with the family and with the job counselor and suggest, why don't we bring in MVAC's Family Homeless Prevention Assistance Project? So they assist with the housing side of things. We might do the food and car side of things, but we work collectively with the person allows us to communicate. And so then we, we leverage both these resources and the other resources at the same time to help them with that, so that they can actually say, okay, housing is stable, food is stable, car is fixed, I can make it to work. That is a clear plan then for that family moving forward, so that they're not in crisis the next month. And that's how a lot of these staff work together on this.
And just to make that more complicated, because this is what we face, but like, Pat talked about the DWI, if you have an active addiction, there's no good prognosis. I mean, we're not going to take that family and just fix them. Then money's not going to really even help, we know that. And so we have to get to the chemical use issue, we have to get to the mental health issue, you know, we try to not go too deep in the weeds with the board, but you all know that like med compliance, when's the last time you saw your doc? Are you taking your meds? Without those things, in my clinical terms, prognosis is very quirk. There's almost no hope. You put it all together as a package, and people start, I always say, we sell hope, that's what we do. And, and I think then you start to say, if, if you go to treatment, if you go see your doc, if you do this, things get better. So that, that's what we're about.
I appreciate that, and the added comment.
And I would imagine most of the people we help are in the system? I mean, not very often you have somebody that just, it starts with this program. They went, I mean, all of a sudden.
Correct. A, a lot of individuals that we help with this program are already connected to healthcare, or they're already connected to SNAP, or, or, you know, they may have recently moved here and they're working with a case manager or something. But there, there can be an individual that, you know, comes here and tries to establish independently and is not connected with us. It's pretty rare.
Okay.
But, you know, most of the time, they're, they're individuals that we do know, or someone within our system does.
I think yellow line, and I mean, I think of how close we've become with, with Pat's office and the sheriff's. A lot of people we know, it's a small town, I still feel we are, we're a hub, we have, you know, growth, but I think we're a small town, and so we know a lot of our people. The truth is, is the people we don't know have probably a better prognosis. The folks that have more of a chronic presentation, a lot of entrenched, entrenched patterns. The old AA slogan, it took you 20 years to get here, it's going to take you 20 years to get out of that pattern. If you get some young adolescent, I always like working with them, because, yeah, they might have some issues, but they're resilient and their whole life's ahead of them. So let's, let's get on the right track, you know, and, and there's a lot of hope in that, I think, too, if we can pull, pluck them out of a hard situation and try to set them back on a different course. So there's some satisfaction.
Very nice program.
Yep, yep. I appreciate your, all that. I was just gonna, the next thing. All right, it's been moved by Vance, your second?
Second.
Second by Kip.
Mr. Chair, for sake of time, we'll go through these.
We got, we got.
I'm sorry, you didn't vote. We got more stuff. You can see, you can see how anxious I am to keep moving.
I would, I would like to comment that the appreciation I have for Christina Ruby and Christopher Broad to take on that job of working with the mental health task force is huge.
Yeah.
For those of us that work with mental health issues daily, we really understand that, and we really appreciate it. Also, the appointment of Lynette Ayers. To the Smiles Board. I, I know that this is just an extra job for her.
Right.
And so for her to take that on, it's really appreciated. Smiles does amazing things for Blue Earth County, and I just wanted to, just wanted to show my appreciation for those folks that really take that step to help people with special needs and with their mental health.
All right. I think we have a motion in front of us? Okay. Thank you, Vance. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose carries. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, just our informational items are pretty straightforward. I, again, just because Angie's with me today, maybe tip it over to her, and she can walk us through the slides that we have for you for data.
So this month, we are talking with you about financial assistance, and it goes very well with our emergency assistance policy that we talked with you about, although we're really showing stats on our, a lot of our other programs here this morning, financial assistance and fraud. And so those are, those are the two topics that we have in front of you today. So you have a number of graphs, and the very first one, the one where it's average monthly active caseload, this is the number of cases, not individuals, so this doesn't represent individual people, but number of individual types of cases that we are working with, within our county. And so you will see a pretty dramatic increase from 2012 to 2021. A few important things to note with this, it's all of our cases, so if we have one individual who's on healthcare, who's on SNAP, and who's on cash assistance, they will be counted as three. If they're in healthcare, it will be counted as one, you know, like whatever number of programs they're in. So it's their number of cases. So in 2013 is when MintSure came online for us, so you'll see an increase there, and that increase is primarily due to healthcare. And so, you know, those are the cases that really went up between 2013 and 14. And then you'll see a steady increase, and then with 20 and 21, another dramatic climb. And that is really related also to healthcare primarily and with COVID. So with COVID, we have not been able to close many healthcare cases while there is a federal public health emergency in place. We're limited as to the reasons why we can close cases. And so if it is a case that is in one of those eligible categories where we can close, we will. In talking with our staff, we do expect that number to drop somewhat at whatever point the federal public health emergency lifts. But in talking with other counties as well, we don't expect it to go back to 2019 numbers. There are a number of reasons why we anticipate the numbers will stay relatively high in terms of healthcare especially. And so you will see that with these cases, this doesn't, doesn't show the number of new cases coming in, it just shows kind of the total number. And so just for some idea, our staff processed over 400 new applications every month in programs. And then people become ineligible, so then we remove them. So there's a churn of about 400 cases every, every month. And so these graphs, all of them only reflect active cases. They don't reflect how many are sitting in the queue that we're actively working on or those that we have in fact closed. So those are, those are pieces that require a lot of work as well.
So you have 400 people, Mr. Chair, you have 400 people every month trying to get in the system? I guess would be a.
400 applications. So there might be a household of one or a household of eight.
Yeah, okay, so it might be, but it's still, it's 400 new requests.
Yes.
Requests for services from the county.
Every month.
Every month.
And when we get those in, we must look at them immediately, because if there's something on there that designates them as an emergency, we, especially with SNAP, we have to process them same day. And so it requires, it has required us to change our business practices, especially with, with COVID, we're using a lot more technology, there's a lot more phone calls, there's video calls, there's all kinds of different things that we're doing. It is somewhat complicated things in, in one respect, and in others, it's simplified it, so there's some give and take there. But every one of those applications has to be looked at and acted upon, triaged essentially. Do we either need to do something today, or can it go in the pile that we can get to tomorrow or the next day, or, you know, something like that? So there are days where it's extremely busy.
It's 20 a day on an average.
What's that?
That's 20 a day on an average. So I would imagine you have peaks and flows, like every other business, so some days you might get 60.
Correct. And, and it's hours to process a case. It's, they're not quick. It, it takes hours. And individuals can check different boxes about if they're applying for healthcare or cash or SNAP, and we have to go through policy on each one of those, depending on how they, what boxes they check.
And staff feel that pressure about the healthcare issue that we haven't been able to close as many cases. There used to be a more of a clean churn throughout all of this, and now the healthcare are kind of put on suspend mode, most of them. And so they know in the back of their head that they've got all these cases they need to clean up eventually, once that, you know, clutch is let out. And so I, I think they know that the workload is, is, you know, kind of really high, and there's a lot of volume coming in the front door, as you suggest.
So as you look through the graphs, I'll just touch on a couple of things. So we've talked about the overall ones, the more colorful chart is the cash program. So these are MFP, general assistance, housing support, which used to be known as group residential housing, and that has been a significant increase for us because we are a hub county. So we have a number of individuals moving into the county to live in more group or residential settings. It's also due to us as a county allowing that to be used as rental assistance. So we did a board work session on this, and we are piloting some of that. And so we're kind of at the front end of, of some of that work, allowing the funds in that way, which is a, is a good thing for individuals. And then you'll see diversionary work program drop down at the end, and we're just not allowed to use that during COVID, but in September, it'll start coming back up. So the state has said that we're able to use the diversionary work program, so it's a transitional program to help people off of MFP, starting in September. So we're looking forward to that. You'll see, the next slide is supplemental nutrition assistance program, that SNAP program. And the scaling on this one, I mean, it, it, there is somewhat of a trend down, it's relatively flat, given the total, the total numbers in there, and we did see that spike in 12 and 13. That's also the time that MintSure was coming on board, and there was a lot of marketing and things happening at that time. The next slide is healthcare specific, so you can see really what's happening with just healthcare. And just note that the scaling starts at 4,000, so it has more than, well, it has almost doubled. And we will expect this to drop down some, maybe not a whole lot, though this is what I was talking about before. So this is, this is the program that we're not able to close people off of, like we typically would have. But we anticipate that need to still remain pretty high post-pandemic. And then the last document in front of you is the Fraud Prevention Investigation Stats, and this fraud program is a program that we're very proud of here in Blue Earth County. And the number that we watch very closely is the CBR, the cost to benefit ratio, and this is something where we can comparatively look at programs across the state. This is a number that DHS calculates, and there's detail on there as far as how that's calculated. You'll see our number went down to $4.79. Anything over $3 is considered successful. $4.79, the reason why it went down is because DHS awarded us by doubling our grant. And so when they double our grant, our cost to benefit ratio goes down. So it looks bad, in reality, it's not. DHS anticipated this to happen, and they expected that. And so you'll see that we're doing a lot of, we're getting a lot of our savings in terms of overpayments and administrative disqualification hearings. And so that is where we're putting a lot of focus, so.
All right. Thank you very much. I think that was very comprehensive all the way through. See if I can remember it all.
For 2019, there must have been a big case in there, huh? Looks like there had one. It looks like only had one person. That's amazing.
And fraud.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
Can't believe we've been doing that since 13.
Yes.
Something. Good program.
Oh, let's see, it's all done then, okay?
I think we are.
All right. Appreciate that.
Thanks, guys.
I think.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for all your work.
Thank you much. Yeah. We proved everything there, I think.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, there was a lot there. All right. Then I guess, Bob, we move into administration.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for March 8th.
Ben moved second?
Second.
Ben moved by Kevin, second by Vance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
Vance moves the bills, second by Kip. Any discussion on that? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. And we have human resources.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number nine in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just have informational items for the board today. We've filled a number of positions, including a data processing specialist in our Human Services Department, a GIAS and Technology Coordinator in our Property and Environmental Resources Department, and then a part-time and full-time correctional officer in the gym. Then next is a clerical specialist in our Community Corrections area. And then the last in this grouping is a registered nurse in our Mental Health Center. We also had a promotion of a correctional officer to a sergeant position. And then we had a resignation of a probation officer in our Community Corrections Department. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also did have a resignation of a medium equipment operator in our Public Works area and have initiated recruitment to refill that position. And then lastly, a resignation of a correctional officer. And so we've initiated recruitment to fill that position. Be happy to answer any questions that the board might have on those items.
Any questions from the board on any of those items?
All right, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, then I have number 10 in your packet is a memo regarding a 3-2 liquor license. These would be effective April 1st, 2022 through March 31st of 2023. The Prairie Box Saloon has requested an on and off sale license. And so both the county attorney and sheriff have reviewed and approved the license, so we're recommending approval here today.
Pat moves.
Kevin moves.
Second.
Second by Vance. Okay, discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right, then we have.
Item number 11 in your packet then is an application for an exempt gambling permit for Ducks Unlimited Chapter that is holding an event in April out in Pemberton. This application basically requires the county board to approve it before it's sent on to the State Gambling Board for final approval.
Motion.
I'll move approval.
Been moved by Kip, your second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 12 in your packet is a memo regarding a resignation of Commissioner Langkammer, who has been appointed to the USDA Director of Rural Development for the state of Minnesota. Commissioner Langkammer did provide a resignation letter effective today. The process for filling that vacancy is outlined in Minnesota Statute 375.101. Since this vacancy is less than, or is within one year of the commissioner's term, the statute does provide an option for the county board to either appoint a person to fill out the vacancy until the general election in November. The statute does, though, require the county board to hold a public hearing, not more than 30 days after the vacancy occurs. And so today we're recommending the board set a public hearing for April 19th to receive public testimony prior to filling the vacancy.
I believe that we have a public hearing on April 19th.
Okay, it's been moved by Vance. Have a public hearing on April 19th, your second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Kip. All right. Hearing no, I guess at this point, then it's all in favor. The motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries. Okay, what else do we have?
That's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Oh, then we're down to.
With that action, do we need to appoint a vice chair?
I plan to bring that at the next meeting. So yes, that is some action we'll need to take.
All right, yep. Okay. In that case, then I guess we have committee reports. Who wants to go first? Let's see. Vance.
Sure. After our last meeting, I had a interview for community farm manager, a young lady. And then on the night, I had another interview with another person for the farm manager I had a, on the ninth, I also had advisory board meeting with Community Corrections. On Friday, the 11th, I was involved with a South Central Minnesota Clean Energy Forum on Zoom. Ba doo, ba doo. On Monday, the 14th, I had a meeting for TDS with the ACHF, which is Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund. On, let's see, Tuesday, the 15th, we had a redistricting open house that was here at the historic courthouse. On Thursday, the 17th, which was St. Patrick's Day, I had a TDS board meeting. On the 18th, I had a NACO RAC or Rural Action Caucus meeting. And yesterday, on the 21st, I had a Transportation Alliance Board meeting. That's the end of my report.
All right, thanks Vance. Kevin?
Since our March 8th board meeting, participated with Mark at the GMC, GMG annual meeting. Kip and I had Soil and Water Conservation District on March 10th. I participated in the Goberba policy meeting on the 11th, as well as the JD 49 hearing this morning. Calls and conversations were primarily ditch 56, wetland issues, and then CD 89 bridge that we talked about this morning. That concludes my report.
Okay, thanks Kevin. And Kip?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After our last board meeting, I had, or Mark and I both attended the MICA conference with a call. We're doing a hybrid, but we weren't able to get there. They did give us the reports of things going on and they're getting, they're getting into the thick of the things up there at the Capitol. Kevin mentioned SWCD. They are getting spooled up to get some programs out there and up and running. The tree program is getting started. Then Friday, the 11th, I met with Senator Rosen via Zoom with Bob and Josh, Matt from MICA, another commissioner from Rice County, and just to talk about, and Phil and Angie to talk about legislative items we have coming up this year. She was very grateful and gave us, she only scheduled us about 30 minutes, but we probably were on with her for about 40 minutes or so. It was nice to visit her and bring some of these to the forefront. She's very knowledgeable on all of them. She was, she's very versed on them, but I think it just doesn't hurt for us just to kind of remind her what we need to get done in Blue Earth County. Then on 15th, redistricting open house was mentioned, which I thought went very well. Just kind of disappointing that not a lot of people come to these open houses, but it is what it is. If I wasn't on the county board, I probably wouldn't have come any, either. So you can't, just the way it is.
Truth be told.
Yeah, truth be told. And then we also had our extension meeting last Thursday night and Josh has joined us to help us keep that process rolling. Apparently somebody from the administration was supposed to be there. And so we had a good turnout. We're only short one member and had good discussion and got the reports from the staff. And then yesterday I had my joint powers board meeting with the South Central Workforce. Things are obviously going pretty well there because there's plenty of jobs out there at this point. And then last night we had our MVAC meeting and we got a new child development director, Matthew, who came from Boston. And it's only been there for a week and it sounds like he's doing a wonderful job. So I had our full, all of our committee reports last night. Everything seems to be going along pretty well there. And then the JD 49 hearing this morning, which was relatively simple. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Kip. Mine had some of the same. I have the 8th of March, we did have the GMG and esteemed Kevin was there too. And that, that went well. And March 9th, we had our Michael, like Kip mentioned, virtual meeting with us. And then I did have Partners for Housing, a property meeting on Tuesday, the 15th. Then we did have the redistricting open house. And then, of course, this morning, then we did have the JD 49 setting hearing. And that actually concludes my report, so. So that, gentlemen, if hearing no other comments. Yep, we have Kevin moving to recess and Kip seconds. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries. All right, thank you, everybody.